We have trustee Stone Cypher with the invitation.
Please stand if you would. Lord, we thank you today for bringing us here to beautiful downtown St. Petersburg, where we can focus on the work of the college, this great institution that we're all a part of, that does so much for Pinellas County and for the people who live and play here. Thank you for the people sitting in this room, for the work that they do day in and day out. Thank you for our students, our faculty, our staff, our outstanding administrators. We just ask that you help guide us through decisions, through making sure that St. Pete College sees another 100 years from where we are right now. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kicking us off today, we have the Institute for Strategic Policies and Solutions Board of Directors recognition.
Thank you so much, Chair Kidwell. It is with pleasure and honor that we recognize four ISPS board members who have served double terms, back-to-back, to support not only the institute, but the students and faculty and staff and community as a whole. Two of them are with us here today. Two are not. Both are judges, Irene Sullivan and Judge George Greer. And we want to thank them by recognizing the contributions that they have made at St. Petersburg College and with ISPS. So I'd like to ask if Ken Burke and Watson Haynes will come forward along with the board. We want to present them with this plaque. Is Dr. Kim Jackson here?
The plaque says, "Honorable Ken Burke, in grateful appreciation of your exemplary service as a board member of the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions at St. Petersburg College, years of service 2017-2022, and Reverend Watson Haynes, in grateful appreciation for your exemplary service as a board member of the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions at St. Petersburg College, years of service 2017 to 2022." Thank you both, and we're very grateful. Yes?
Can you go down a little bit?
I want to thank the, first of all, Dr. Williams for this nice honor, and thank the board. Appreciate your tremendous service to our college. And also, I want to recognize this man next to me, because I'm not sure you realize how long his devoted service to St. Petersburg College has been. But back when Dr. Bennett retired, back in 1978, there was a committee appointed to screen new presidential candidates. And Watson Haynes was a community service member back at that time that selected Dr. Cutler as president. So he has a 40-year history of dedicated involvement to St. Petersburg College, and I think we should recognize that, and I certainly appreciate all of that.
Well, they said, "Don't give a minister the mic," but I know this meeting is going to go to seven tonight, so I have a long time to talk about. Let me thank my president, young lady that I'm very proud of, who I've known before she was born. And so, got a chance to see her in action at St. Petersburg College. And so, I love this institution, and I love this board for what you've done. My nephew, Devron, that I have to, once in a while, pull him in. But I'm not responsible for whatever happened to him. And my niece, Kim. So I'm just proud of this institution, and I'm here to serve. And I'm going to be with the president again today, where we've launched some efforts with Duke Energy, our line worker program. And so, I'm not finished. This is just a plaque for the next thing to put me on and kick me off. But God bless you, and thank you all for this honor.
We have, of course, two board members missing, and I just wanted to take time to honor Judge Irene Sullivan and Judge George Greer. They have been amazing advocates over the past three years. They have worked tirelessly to help change and create real synergy in the community. And I also want to take time to thank these two gentlemen, since they're here personally. Ken Burke has personally kept me accountable and on point, and I want to thank him for his hard efforts. And Watson has taken literally 10,000 phone calls in a week for the past three years. So thank you so much for honoring them today.
I stayed up here because I don't want to move too much, so I'm going to do my comments for me, if that's all right. Number one, let me thank the two people that are not here. Judge Greer, who's a good friend and has been a good advocate, a great advocate for this county and this nation. I don't know if people know all the things that Judge Greer has been involved in. And also, Judge Sullivan, we really appreciate your service. And thank you so much for being a part of the college, especially the institute. I don't know where to start. Should I start with Ken or Uncle Watson?
Start with Ken.
Start with Ken? Okay. Ken Burke, my friend, good guy. I have worked with Ken on a professional level, as a colleague on this board, and now, again, at the college on ISPS. We've worked on national things together. And let me just tell you, there is not a more professional person that I have ever met. Everywhere that Ken Burke goes, he brings up the group that he deals with. We all are better for his service, and I want to thank him for continuing to make me, as well as many others, including the clerks, a better group of people. I could not ask for a better friend, a better friend and ally in Ken Burke. But he has literally made Pinellas County and the college a better place for all people. And one of the stories that I like to share about Ken all the time is that, you know, the African-American male population on these campuses, people say, "Oh, Devron, you got with Dr. Williams, or you got with Dr. Law, and you're doing..." That's not true. It was Ken Burke who nudged me, along with the rest of the board. We were sitting on stage. As people were crossing the stage, Ken Burke looked up and said, "Devron, there are African-American women graduating, but there are no men up here." And that's when we got our heads together at his impetus to say, "Look, we need to work on the black male population." And so, I just want to say thank you to my friend. Thank you for your service. And I know you're not going anywhere, but I want people to know how well a job it's you do. So thank you. Now, this other guy right here, I'm not responsible for him either. I just want y'all to know. He has literally known every African-American person before they were born in the city. So like, he did, he knew me before I was born. When Ken Burke talked about him working in '78, I was in his office running around as a kid, while my mother worked on the other side of the building. And he would allow me and his son, little Watson, to run around in his office. And we probably caused more trouble in his office than anything else. I don't know, the state knew all the stuff that we were doing in that office, that he would have been able to stay there. But no, seriously, as a man, an African-American male in this county, there are very few people that I can say that have held a standard for you to look up to in terms of service to our community. And my uncle Watson is one of them. I don't care where I go in this country, people know him. They know the things he's done. When he showed up at the Urban League, he was not a newcomer to the Urban League. He had served the Urban League for 30, 40 years there as well. And I ended up in a meeting, who now is a friend of mine, with Mark Morial, who's the CEO and president of the National Urban League, and my uncle Watson had taken over. And sometimes you just listen in meetings, because you want to know what people really think about other people. You don't say much, and I didn't say anything. And by the time the meeting was over, the things that he said about my uncle Watson made me proud, to be a part of him, his family, and be on his particular tree in life, to be a leaf on that tree. The things that he said were that we were going to be a better Urban League, a better place, and a better community, because Watson is serving. And so, Uncle Watson, I just say thank you for that, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate all that you've poured into me and other men and other people in this community. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's already being called.
Good, moving along. I have a few comments before we open up the rest of the board. We're in the middle of final exams, or just starting final exams, so, you know, we want to give credit to the faculty once again for getting us to this point, preparing our students, having them ready for final exams. It's obviously a big deal, because graduation follows very soon thereafter. I will be at the Palladium for the Collegiate High School for Gibbs, graduation Friday the 6th, and then, of course, commencement on the 7th at the TROP. So I just wanted to recognize the faculty, and of course, we will be recognizing all of our students here soon. That's all I've got. Anyone else?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate USF St. Pete on the significant gift they got for their business school this week. And Jesse Turtle and I were just talking, and for those of you who don't recall, we stole Jesse from USF St. Pete. And so, I was asking him this morning if he had a little bit of professional angst there, seeing such a wonderful contribution, that I know in his prior career, he had worked, prior job worked so hard to establish that relationship. And what he reminded me so appropriately is that a rising tide raises all ships. And the partnership that the college has with USF St. Pete and the contributors, both the education system in St. Pete, the fintech program being very creative there, together with all of the hard work that our academic group and our student services group and our career services organizations have done to identify these types of programs at St. Pete College, where we can take these students and really identify pathways and work in, as Dr. Williams says, the education ecosystem that we have here in Pinellas County. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, from our standpoint at the college, how exciting it is to see such an investment by the community at large into the education system. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. I think the other piece to that is Jesse's doing a good job in holding on to those relationships as well. Don't sleep on us here. You know, we're working on that, aren't we, Jesse? We've got a plan. And we're working the plan, and the plan is working. So we're, and we're happy for USF St. Pete as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just want to make a couple of comments. One, I went, I was able to attend the foundation's donors and scholars luncheon, which I was very happy to see back in person. It's such a great event to get everyone together, both the scholars and those that have helped to contribute over the years. I wanted to thank the foundation and Jesse for putting that together and making it such a success. I was able to bring my wife this year, which I've been trying to do for the past few years, and it didn't happen. And it was neat to watch through her eyes, seeing that event for the first time, and hearing from some of these students personally on what these scholarships meant to them and how their lives are going to change. I think it's a great reminder of what we're doing here, and how much, how much goes into lifting these students up and making sure that they have better lives on the other side of what they're doing at St. Pete College, which is good for the whole community, as we always talk about. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Williams for your State of the College address. Was it last week?
Yes.
These weeks just, you know, they go by so fast. And, you know, I think that's going to be a good practice to get into. It's, it was neat to see you presenting where we're going and what we're doing to all those in the community who want to hear. And I know with the change in dates, it threw us a little bit of a loop this year, because we had to push that back. But that was a great event. I wasn't at the one in North County, so I'm not sure how that went.
It went very well.
You were there, Chair?
Yes.
Chair Kidwell? Perfect. But to do two of them as well, I mean, you know, that's a lot of work. And I didn't see Dr. Williams use any notes the whole time she was up there, so, yeah. But I think this is an important step in the right direction of making sure we're communicating and we're transparent, and the information is out there for whoever wants to listen and hear it. This is what we're doing. This is St. Pete College. We're here. Use us and tell us what you need, because we can help. So thank you for taking the steps to do that.
Okay. Well, I can take the first two things I was going to talk about off my list, because you have done such a good job there. But I do want to thank the staff and Jesse, you know, for the work he did for the State of the Union, Jackie, all others who helped put that together and make it happen. I do think that it's going to be the best practice going forward. I did receive a lot of regret emails. I'm sorry I missed it. I'm sorry I missed it. The date that we moved it to, there were like three big things happening on the same night. So when we moved it, we lost some folks, but I also gained some new friends, who said, "I didn't know St. Pete College was doing that. I didn't know you guys..." So we need to not be the best-kept secret, and the only way to do that is to be out in public. I think there's a group of individuals that trustee Gibbons is working with me on getting in front of, that are some of the other movers and shakers that I don't know. And I think trustee Gibbons, you got to talk about this like four years, five years ago, when I first started. So we're working on that. But we had to make sure we had what we needed to give them, to show them who we are. So the strategic plan and putting things in place, changing how we work, structured differently. I think we're ready now to go live, you know, with that. I think when I first started, we just didn't have enough of the right stuff to share and the things to do. The reason I didn't have notes was it was so easy to say, because we're doing such good things, and we have such good people, and we're moving things forward. And so, it just kind of clicked very well. And I'm looking forward to next year's, and maybe we should try it in the fall, you know. So we'll see where we land there. But we have some other good things that have happened, and I don't want to keep you long. The first thing is our SPC Model UN team did it again. They traveled to New York last week and competed with the New York Model UN Nations at the conference, and they were among the winners of the conference's highest award, the Outstanding Delegation Award. Kazakhstan, a Republic of Asia. Two of our students won Outstanding Position Paper Award while competing against 96 universities and colleges, including over 30 from abroad. Our students were outstanding and were exemplary SPC representatives. We are proud of the Model UN faculty members, Dr. Doug Rivero, lead faculty, and Dr. Landy Wrightfoot, Dr. Bledare Prifidi, and I'm going to say it wrong, Dr. Afel Haast-Athamot. And Dr. Roberto Larrero served as our faculty coaches, along with our students. And I have to read their names, because they've worked so hard and they've studied. So if I butcher your name, I apologize. It is, our students are Olivia Halleck, Niall Nickel, Felix Nickel, Angela Lee, Alexandra Lonnie, Mia Newsom, Duke Pagnagodis, Hunter Heis, Teresa Semenu, Yedira Rivers, Joshua Brown, Max Cone, Alisa Alawar, and Jacqueline Bowden, and Alexander Gill. The other thing that happened last week is at Phi Theta Kappa, there's a distinguished five-star chapter award, and Seminole campus, three years in the running, five-star top honor. Good job, Seminole. And Seminole student Chloe Smith was named the distinguished chapter officer for Phi Theta Kappa. So that's, that's a national, which is really big. Yesterday, we held our first STEM collegiate high school session with families that are interested in the new workforce high school that's starting in the fall. And so, we have another one tonight and one next Monday. So if you have folks who are interested in the STEM collegiate high school, please have them check us out on Facebook. Our faculty, learning resources team presented at the Old Dominion University at the 43rd Spring Conference on Teaching of Writing. The specialists who attended or presented, Thaddeus Franken Schweitz, Grace Renninger, and Lynn Rourke. They joined the director, Matthew Bodie, and delivered a presentation on transforming writing centers. Most notably, the presentation featured a live look at one of the most collaborative and creative projects to come out of the Learning Resource Center in months, the Titans Titan Writing Skills, TTWS Toolkit. And so, it's to help our students gain writing skills and do better. So hats off to Learning Resources. Dr. Kimberly Jackson, executive director of ISPS, St. Pete, is being honored as Academy Preps, one of Academy Preps' five fabulous females, and will be recognized on May 6. Trustees at your desk, you have a lot of the events that are coming up. We'd like for you to look at those and check off the ones that you would like to attend. Graduation is May 7 at the TROP. Keep in mind that this graduation will include graduates who graduated during the pandemic, who want to have the experience of crossing the stage. So put your running shoes on. Trustee Cole, your flats will be definitely needed. We'll be switching around roles, you know, the entire time, but we're expecting a larger crowd. I think the last count that I received for families that have registered, we have over 9,500 family members coming so far.
As long as I don't have to read names, I'll do anything.
The trustees may want the deans helping some of that this time with the numbers that we, that we have. And I think that is all that I will share for spotlights at this time.
All right. Meeting is now open for public comments. Do we have any blue cards? Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? The public comment period is closed. Moving on to the review and approval of minutes. Everybody, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to the monthly report. Mia, do we have any?
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustee Dr. Williams. We've had our first collective bargaining session with the United Society of Florida on April 8. They provided a proposed agreement, which the team is now reviewing, and will be scheduling a shade meeting to discuss their proposals as needed.
Any questions? We're good. Moving on to the strategic focus. Are we ready to go here? I think we are. We have the 2022 Legislative Session Summary. Mr. Chris Schoonover, partner at Capital City Consulting.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Hey, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for having me on. It's good to see everybody. This next one, the next I've got, I'd like to come down, so we can see each other in person. So our 2022 session concluded, and we actually just restarted a special session today on legislative district dealing with the congressional map. So legislators will be here in town. And the governor just actually issued a proclamation expanding the call of this session, literally 30 seconds ago. I was grand willing to read what it was on, to deal with special districts. So that part of the legislative process, we'll have to check that out. Just a quick summary, and I think somewhat, I don't think I can change this over yet. So overall, we had a big interaction for St. Pete College. I'll be completely frank. And the person who either thanked you, seen you, or heard you is Speaker Chris Powell. He came through for us. He stood strong. He was very helpful in his strategic appropriations for St. Pete College to grow, to enhance what you guys are doing, and the community around the area. And we'll get to that in the next couple of slides, I pointed out. But overall, so the budget was the largest in state history. They concluded at $112 billion. And you can see a lot of that, they go into education. They put $8.9 billion into reserves, and then they created something new, an inflationary fund, and they put a billion dollars in that that allows flexibility for the legislative budget commission to transform it if necessary to deal with inflationary cost increases. You can see a lot in typical election years, which is what we have this year's session. There were 17 over 1700 bills introduced, and only 238 passed. So that's very typical of election years. You don't really have a real need to pass a ton of bills. They're very careful about it in the upcoming elections. So a very small percentage did pass. Next slide. All right. So as I mentioned, you can kind of see here on this slide where we ended up on specific projects for St. Pete College. So number one, we were successful in getting $5 million for deferred maintenance at Turkey Springs. Senator Hooper and Representative Chris Lotlaw were sponsors of our appropriation request for that, for that bill. And we were successful in getting that funded in legislature, and Speaker Powell actually put a little bit more money than what we were asking for in the budget for that. So that's, that was very nice and very kind of him. The next one is the public safety operational enhancements. That was sponsored by Senator Hooper and Representative Nick Distickley. And that's for the law enforcement training facility, for repat renovations to the gun range, and other facility improvements that are available there. And they were, that helped support pretty much the whole way through the process, just because of the role that St. Pete College plays in the law enforcement community, not just for current law enforcement officers who utilize that facility, but also the students you guys have. The next one is operating support for St. Pete College. So this came in at the very end of session, when the speaker released his supplemental funding list, the sprinkle. So he put in additional $5 million in recurring funds for St. Pete College, and they're free, guys. And that's to continue implementing, this municipal 757 which passed, not this past session, the session before, the people would pay $5 million for you all for workforce development. And then finally, because of the large amounts of federal dollars that we have at the state level from the city and their way to be spent, the legislature and the leaders, they decided to finally spend a lot of money on critical deferred maintenance that has been growing year after year. So every state university, every state college got critical deferred maintenance money. This is a line item in the budget, and your share is 47.5 million. It's, that's a remarkable number, and it's, you know, assuming the governor approves it, as long as everyone else's, that will provide a significant enhancement to some means you all have on campus to finally make some renovations, some maintenance needs to roofing and critical infrastructure. And just forwarding to the next one, just so everyone's aware, the work denominates, all three, all four of these bullet points, all four of these projects are, well, I take that back, the operational support is built into your base, so that cannot be used by the governor. The other means are your entire funding, and that's just not going, I've never seen it happen. And it would certainly have schooled out, so that's very likely. But the other three bullet points are line appropriations. So Nick, I'll see myself, did a work with the governor's office to provide information to manage, and did a review of the budget, as the governor considers his ETO pay. He's made some comments that, you know, he potentially wants to see the budget coming closer to $110 million. So it could be a very significant ETOs made. We will legislate a governor's proclamation on your projects to show that there isn't an outlier impact to the state. We expect the governor to act on the budget following this special session. That's what we're hearing, either next week or the week after. And then below that are just some of the bigger, large amounts of funding that was included for the college, for the college system. So the legislature did $30 million for the tier-based funding model. They divvied it up based on their own model, on what they kind of used last year. But they did include proviso that requires DOE to work with Florida college system to come up with a new model. So that will be done in the interim. So we'll be working with DOE as they kind of develop that. And President White will certainly be a part of that conversation with her counterparts of the other colleges. But that will be, it's a recommendation we can give to the legislature and report on how that will work moving forward in future funded amounts and future sessions. And then the next year, there's some of the differences. SOR, which got $5.4 million, which I'll talk about in the future slide, but it's an online database of all the learning material that they create, so that's usually accessible to students. Any questions on this slide before we move on? All right. So two new, very big projects that got funded by the legislature deal with nursing. And these are recurring funds that will be renewed every session unless a legislature decides to undo it and take it back out. But there has been, because of COVID, as you all are aware, talking with your hospital partners in the community, there is a significant crisis in the nursing shortages. So with the legislature's guidance, they created two different pots of money. The first pot is called LINE, Linking Industry to Nursing Education, for $19 million in recurring funds. And what it does is it incentivizes colleges and universities to work with healthcare partners in a competitive grant program. The way you get the money is you have to show a dollar-for-dollar basis, so you can get money from a healthcare provider in the community, the state will tip in the exact max amount. And the idea is to provide support to not just the hospital, but to the educational institutions to increase nurses in the area. The next one is called Pipeline, and it's thinking of sort of prepping institutions, programs, employers, and learners for incentives for nursing education. And this one is, goes directly to colleges and universities who set up a nursing program utilizing the current centers, and only based on performance and completion rates and certifications and exam rates of those nursing students. So it's basically a performance-based funding system on your nursing program. So your nursing program is fantastic, so both of these programs, I anticipate, you'll all be able to benefit from these funds. Next slide. The next two bills were policy bills. The first one was an education and programming bill that was passed. It was part of the budget conference, and what that means is that this legislation had to pass to implement some of the funding decisions made in the budget bill. So the first one is, is creating an open educational resource program using the post-secondary academic library network. The next one is that SOR program, a repository and a reference, and that will be a searchable database of open educational resources. The one thing I want to point out is that, because you do have dolement courses at your school, there's one provision in there specifies that institutional materials for these dolement courses must be made available to all students free of charge rather than just the public student. So if any of your other students want access to these dolement course materials, they need to provide it to them as well. And the other things that it did is it established, it kind of laid out the parameters on the LINE program, the pipeline program, and then it puts something in there for allowing and increasing the beds for the peace of college, and then additionally, it does allow SCF colleges to construct twenty-five more beds for employees, educators, and first of all, students who live on campus. I don't know whether you all do that or not, but that was put in there. The next slide. So this is, this bill was actually delivered to the governor today, so we should be acting on it relatively soon. And this was the big post-secondary education bill, and this deals with three big things: transparency, course information and transfer credit, and accreditation. And all of these impact state colleges. So the first one is that I want to point out is that it will require a supermajority vote of your board of trustees to increase fees. So that will be, you know, something to consider as we move forward. Additionally, there's a whole thing on transparency, right? They want the college system and universities to predominantly post their students all of their lists and textbooks and the required materials at least forty-five days before the classes start, and then they remain posted for at least five years. Finally, it's actually searchable by course number, course subject, course name, textbook. The goal here is the legislature wanted to make sure the students had an easier way of access on what would be required rather than well in advance rather than two days before the class starts, so they can kind of see what the class looks like. There's something in there that deals with allowing transfers of creds, and that will impact it all as well regarding elected creds. And then finally, accreditation. You guys were wrapped into this. I think the sole premise of this kind of was maybe, I guess, targeted at the SUS, but they lumped in that for the college system as well. And you can look at this later, but basically it required you to seek accreditation from a different creditor than you had at the time of four. And there's an incredible list of creditors out there that you really will, you have to go out and seek accreditation from that next, a different creditor. If you're not, if you can't, if you're not able to accomplish that, you can fall back to your prior creditor, but they do want you to try to seek accreditation from a different accreditation agency in the next review.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah?
On the accrediting piece, bullet three, where it says requires in the year following reaffirmation for the, for the fifth year review, we're at our fifth year review next year.
Yes.
So we would have to start seeking new accreditation.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to make sure.
Is that in 2022 or 2023?
2023, we're in our.
Okay, yeah, you definitely will, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then next slide. And this one was passed and signed by the governor already. This deals with public records and presidential searches. So this is just something that was, there's, I think, the total of four state universities right now going through searches for presidents, so that's why it got passed so quickly and signed by the governor. And it will allow for the searches to be outside of the time zone. And that idea, what this is, this has been allowed for, I think this is the fourth session and it did finally pass, and it allows for, you know, the goal here is to ensure that there's no, that they get the best pool of applicants, because they've heard before that there were, at the state university level at least, that there were applicants who were scared to apply for jobs because they would be punished by their current employer if their current employer found out they were going after another job. So this will keep it in the fun time. And I believe that's the last slide. Any questions?
Chris, I have one question. The critical and deferred maintenance amount, is it, what's the timeline on utilizing this fund?
Yeah, so the timeline is once the governor signs the budget. This is going to be the next fiscal year, but it, that, there's this huge part of the budget in the back end that deals with the federal funds coming down, so there is a clause in there that says contingent on the federal funding or leave. So the timing is on when those funds become available for spending. So it just depends on when the governor signs the budget and when they can use those funds to available to spend. That's the timing on it.
But on the other, on the other side of it, I guess, is what I.
Oh, yeah, on the TARP.
No, no. If this is signed, and if the funds actually come through, do we have a certain window in which we have to spend down all $47 million?
This, this for your 2022, 2023.
So it has to.
It has to all be allocated.
Chris, I think the question he's asking is one, you have to allocate it and show that it's allocated for a budget and it's going to be utilized in a timely manner.
Right.
Get that back to the legislative body, show that it's going to be utilized in the next year or year and a half, based upon how fast you can get the project accomplished.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think they're going to give some leading to you on that, because let's be real, it's some of this requires permanent contract.
Right.
So there will be a plan, all that's going to be worked out by DLE, to be totally honest with you, they're going to have to set a whole slew of parameters, because it's got a long sum in there, and there's still some questions on, they're going to ask some information on how you're going to spend it. So there will be, as long as the governor approves it, there will be some data coming from DLE, and I'll be able to be clear about all that once we cross that line, because that is a lot of money you're going to have to spend in just one year, considering having that.
And trustee Stonecifer also, when it comes to sometimes the PICO or the deferred maintenance, we do have a set amount of months, somewhere between two years to three years in the current conference, so we'll have some time to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, I cannot thank you and Nick enough for the work that you guys have done and with Eric. You got me into doors that I could not get into without you. Help prepare us for what we need to say, and, you know, I could not have done it without your help. And I know you and Eric were kind of communicating on a regular, every day, but when I wanted to see someone or we needed to get in, you made, you guys made that happen. But I think the other piece is understanding what's coming and who's aligned with what and how to do it. And this has been a stellar year. Last year was a great year. We had an excellent year last year as well. And so I just want to thank you guys for the work you've done, and I want to recognize the foundation, who again has supported for next year. And so we're excited about that, but this is excellent news, a great outcome, and we're looking forward to the governor's pen swiping in the right direction. So, but we thank you for that.
Me too.
And I think you're saying maybe he will be looking at the budget after special session, so maybe next week or the week after?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chris, let me just say thank you and to you and I, Rossi, for the work you've done. I've had the opportunity to work with you guys for quite some time, and you guys have been an exceptional firm, and thank you for helping the college get to where we need to be in terms of the budget. And I'd so like to openly thank the foundation. I think we pressed them a little harder than they wanted to be pressed on this, but as you can very well see, that when we have the right team, the right results will happen for this college, and we definitely have the right team in Tallahassee. I mean, the only thing Ms. Schooney cannot do is cook.
Oh.
So, so, you know, thank you guys, and thank you, Dr. Williams, for you and your effort and your team, and the rest of the board should be committed as well for all the time that you've spent working with these folks on shirts of Tallahassee and so the other things. So thank you guys. Thanks, Tony.
No, thank you, everybody, for your faith in us, and thanks to the foundation for their continued support of us. And as we move forward, you know, kind of close this chapter, moving forward to the next chapter, you know, we will have a new speaker, a new president, who will have different goals in it, as regards higher education. So I do know I'm through a transition right now to replace Eric, but you know, this summer, I'll plan a trip down, we need to sit down, because those, the upcoming leadership does have different priorities than Speaker Styles and President Simpson. So we'll need to strategize on that. It's great having a speaker who's from your backyard. You won't have that in the next year, or the current president for that matter. So we'll need to strategize on that, but that's not right now. Now it's just, we'll skip through this, and then we'll plan for the future.
But we may have to prepare for a new education commissioner, right?
Actually, yes, that will come soon, I'll report.
And we also have five of our delegation leaders leaving, so we will have in Pinellas a lot of new representatives and senators, one senator. So we'll have to prepare for that, so it's going to be a lot of brand-new ideas and thoughts and concepts. So we're up for the challenge. I know you guys are as well, and we hope to have our new government relations person in the next couple of weeks, so hopefully we'll be ready to rock and roll. But thank you so much.
No, no, thank you. Everyone have a great rest of your day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Next up, we have Jesse Turnbull from the foundation.
Speaking of the foundation.
Yeah.
We get to hear from Chris.
Good morning, Chair Gidwell, trustees, Dr. Williams. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to talk about the foundation and all that we're able to do together. I'm going to probably go off-script a lot, so I apologize if I looked down at my notes. I'm more of an off-script kind of person than an on-script kind of person, but just from the comments from today, when I started three years ago, Dr. Williams said, "The foundation board and the board of trustees are not together." And she said, "One of your main priorities is to help build that culture and philanthropy, and it starts with the foundation board, with the president, and the board of trustees." And I want to thank you all for all of your hard work. Katie was our designee when I first started, trustee Stonecifer is currently our, and you are wonderful advocates for the foundation and the work that's done and for the college. So I am very proud to say that the board of trustees is 100% participation for the last fiscal year for our fundraising campaign. So thank you so much. Trustee Givens, thank you for putting your dogs away while I climbed over your fence to get your gift. Much appreciated.
You're pretty brave.
Everyone is a fundraiser. Everyone in this room is a better fundraiser than anyone who works at the foundation team, because you all can tell the story. You all are passionate about your particular programs or your particular area of interest. It really just blows my mind when I am out in the community and I hear the stories about St. Pete College and one degree of separation. I had lunch with Jeff Adams yesterday, and he's talking about all these stories from thirty and forty years ago, talking about trustee Givens as well. So, you know, these are the people from our community that we're engaging or re-engaging, and that is really how we tell our story and build the culture of philanthropy. Everyone behind me is a much better fundraiser than I am. I can talk the numbers and the gift agreements, but everyone here talks about their program, and I'm just so proud to be at St. Pete College, and it really is just inspiring. So that's my off-script. So let me get back on script. Faculty, students, even faculty, staff, students, trustees, board members, we're all fundraisers. We're raising money for the college. Now let me repeat that. We're raising money for the college, not for the foundation. Oftentimes I hear, well, the foundation did this and the foundation did that. It is all about the donor, okay? Except for the consultant, that was the foundation. Everything else is about the donor. So these are donor dollars. These are people in the community. These are businesses. These are corporations. These are foundations. These are people who understand the value of St. Pete College and the impact that it has. We saw firsthand from two of our scholars at the Donors and Scholars Lunch, and it wasn't just that they got a scholarship from a donor, it was all the other elements. They actually talked very little about their scholarship. They talked more about the faculty support and the student support, about getting a cell phone number from a faculty member, and having Dr. Williams reply to an email at midnight. I mean, what president does that? Dr. Williams does that, and that's why St. Pete College is such a great place. So now I'm, now I'm really off. All right, let's go to the next slide. We'll talk about that. All right. The donors of St. Pete College are alumni, they're companies, they're businesses, they're staff, they're faculty, they're so on. We have over 450 funds that the foundation manages on behalf of the college. About 165 of those are for programs, colleges, support services, tutoring, everything that you can imagine that is the support side of the college and academics. And we have about 285 of those funds are scholarships. All of them, except for a few, are donor restricted. So I make a gift, and I want it restricted to the College of Nursing or to tutoring or whatever. So it's about the donor, and so we have a donor-centered focus where we're meeting the donor where they are. They have an impact, they really want to support health education. So the Huff Family Foundation, which was a wonderful gift, which was a concerted effort from Dr. Williams to Blinty Berry, to Dean Lewis, Eric Carver, I mean, I don't know how many people were a part of that wonderful gift to support health education, but they wanted to help make a difference. And so their gift was designated to expand the nursing simulation lab, provide faculty support and equipment, also for allied health and some of our certificate programs at the Midtown Campus. We actually came, they actually came to us and said, "We want to give you funding for scholarships." And everyone behind me talked about, well, that's not what's going to have the greatest impact. This is what's going to have the greatest impact. And through those conversations, they understood what their investment was going to do. And so if you make a $5 investment or a $1 million investment, it has an impact. It really does, and it's about participating. And it's about participating and telling the story. So support from our donors allows the college to be innovative and implement growth in a very short amount of time. So, you know, we're talking about the funding from the state, but we're not going to see that for a long time. But if we have a donor make a $100 gift to support the food banks, we can put that money to work right away. We don't have to wait. It goes right from the foundation, right to, right to that particular department. All right, let's talk about the numbers. So the college raised 7.8 million, over $7.8 million. And I'll reiterate that the college raised. The foundation didn't raise. This is, the college raised $7.8 million. Last year, we raised just under $5 million. I think the previous year, we did $3.5 million. So we are well on our way, maybe a little short of the US of St. Pete, but we are well on our way to really creating an opportunity for our community and our donors to have a great impact at the college. I do want to remind everybody, the foundation runs on a different fiscal year than the college. It's April 1st to March 31st. So I again will be asking everyone to make their annual gift back to support the college. This year's goal is seven and a half. Some of that is science. Some of that is, we know some gifts are going to be coming in through our relationships and conversations that we're currently having. And it's also wishful thinking about how we're going to do and the activities and engagement levels that we're going to be planning for. The foundation staff, which helps develop and guides the college in its fundraising efforts, is comprised of nine staff members. And they're not all frontline fundraisers. So we have three frontline fundraisers. We have two people in our scholarship office that three times a year gives out almost $3 million in scholarships and works with many of the people behind me in terms of selecting and making that process, coordinating with the financial aid office. And Mike Mags, thank you, sir, sending us those invoices so we can transfer back and forth. Lot of back-office items. We have a art curator. We have a database administrator that administers a database that we have over 120,000 people in. Many of those are alumni. We have a foundation newsletter. We have a foundation for alumni and a foundation newsletter. We're on social media. It's like this microcosm within one department. So they really do a lot of work. And I'm very proud to work with such a great team. And I'm happy to be here at the downtown center, obviously, so with the president. Our foundation board of directors currently has 14 members. They are all volunteers, but in them have served for many years. I am also very proud of this group, working with the foundation board of directors, being at events, coordinating, talking, and really telling the same story. We're all on the same page. That's really, really beneficial. All right, so the donor impact. Here is just a very small example of the different programs that donor, that the donor dollar impacts. I'm not going to read them all, but they're essentially from A to Z. Every part of this college is helped and supported through donor support. These are all spanning all of our different initiatives. So, you know, if we have a donor that says, "Hey, we want to start X, Y, or Z program, and I'm going to give you $10 million," and that's not in our wheelhouse, I will happily direct them somewhere else in our community where that might have an impact. But we need to make sure that the donor is aligned with our initiatives. And for those of our, every single donor, well, all the donors are. So it's just, at our last foundation board meeting, Mike Mags was talking through some of the numbers, and he was saying all of the different programs at the college that the donors were able to support. And that was actually, hey, we should talk about this with the board of trustees and make sure all, all that we know that we do is communicated out to you. So I want to emphasize again that these are donor dollars, right? And the foundation is helping manage those funds if they're endowed, if they're operating funds. Like I said, we have over 450 funds that we're helping manage for, for the college. All right. So what's next? If you haven't heard, we're being very loud about our quiet leadership phase of our 100th campaign. We have a consultant that we've been working with that has helped us from the front end, really helped plan and make sure that we're ready for a campaign, and we certainly are. This is obviously going to be our focus this year and the next several years, culminating in 2027. And we're engaging donors, prospective donors, in a variety of ways. And one of those is small receptions with the president. We actually have our very first one that trustee Butz is hosting for us on Saturday. So thank you so much. We'll see, you're the test, you know, case, so we'll see how it goes. We have about...
I almost said dummy, test dummy.
We have approximately 20 donors who will be at that event. And it's an opportunity for Dr. Williams to speak to them directly in a small, intimate setting to have great conversations. So she can talk about the campaign, what our plans are, what our impact is, and they can have the opportunity to really talk with trustee Butz and talk with President Williams and really make those connections. And the thought is, these will hopefully lead to some of the lead gifts of the campaign. So in a campaign, in a quiet phase, you're really talking to a lot of folks who are able to make some transformational gifts. And you want to be able to essentially be at 60 to 7% of your goal. Our goal as of now is $30 million. I anticipate that that will be larger once we get through this leadership phase, based on our current conversations with donors in the community. So I am very, very excited to celebrate, you know, our 100th anniversary. That leads me to our next, what's next? SBC Day, celebrated on September 12th of this year. That is the anniversary date for the college. And this year, we're going to start, and really, this is our, this is our, again, our test. We're going to, we're going to start small, make it a community event. We'll have some activities on the Gibbs Campus. And then each year, as we do this, we'll grow to all the other colleges. And the idea is that this is a way for us to tell the story and celebrate with the community. So this is a large community event. Jackie and I are working with the city of St. Pete, and they're going to incorporate themselves, which is wonderful to have their support. I think they probably have over 200 or 300 city employees who are SBC Titans. So we're really making sure that we're doing a lot of connecting. Also, we're going to be switching our Giving Day from Tuesday after Thanksgiving, which is the National Day of Giving. We're going to switch that to this day as SBC Day. And we'll have a new design for a new sock. If you remember, if you made a $50 gift or higher, you got a pair of socks. Mike Mags has his on. I have mine on. Anybody else have your SBC socks on?
Yeah, SBC sweater.
Thank you, sir. All right.
I didn't match what I had on. Is this just because I have to give more than $50 now?
So SBC Day is about participation. And last year, we had a goal of 200 donors. The two previous years, we had a monetary goal. We actually raised more money with a participation goal than we had with a number goal. We raised, I think, well over 60,000 or 70,000. We had 210 donors. And I think our goal this year is 250 donors or more. And this day, this Giving Day and celebrating the college is really about participation. How many people can we get engaged just through by making a gift? The simple act of just making a gift. It's almost sometimes the easiest way to be engaged with your, with your college. You know, you don't have to serve on a board. You don't have to, you know, there's no time commitment other than just clicking on your phone and saying, "I want to help." So that's a wonderful way, and we'll do that continually from now until forever, basically. So, all right, now I'm totally off-script. All right. Well...
Jesse, can we go back?
Yeah.
The other thing was...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot one.
The foundation board of directors, we have open slots. And so we definitely need to get some new members to join. I think that we have a few who, their time is...
Beth Horner will be cycling off, as well as Bill McLeod. So two longtime board members. We have a governance committee that we vet our new candidates through. And Josh Baumstein will be our new chair, coming in for a two-year term. And then he'll serve two years as the immediate past chair. Jacqueline Ballard will be our new vice chair. So she'll serve two terms as a vice chair, or two years, two years as chair, and then two years as immediate past chair as well. So always looking for some new board members, South County, Mid County, North County, different backgrounds, different professions. We want to essentially have a good representation on our board so we can engage the maximum amount of people, especially now that we're in our campaign mode. So thank you, Dr. Williams, for reminding me of that. Our foundation board budget was approved last week or the week before with our executive committee. It will go on Thursday when we have our first annual foundation board meeting. So we will share that with you after that is complete. So are there any questions? Did I forget anything?
No, I think for the trustees, we could see changes.
You may not see your job, that's about it. Everyone's a fundraiser.
This has been fun to watch. Thank you. Mr. Chair, just real quick. Jesse, thank you again. And you reminded me of something at the very beginning, when you first started speaking with us today, when you mentioned the faculty and how special they make our institution as well. I had the pleasure of sitting in on interviews with students a few weeks ago with the Alumni Association. Bill McLeod was there. We had a great time. But in speaking with all these finalists for the two awards that we were going to be handing out, the common thread of every single interview we had was faculty. Every single student. They mentioned a lot of other things through our conversation, but it always came back to, "The reason I succeeded and the reason I love this place and the reason I'm choosing to stay here to get another certificate or degree or whatever it is, is because of the faculty relationship I had and them making sure that I stayed on course and finished." And so I meant to bring that up earlier, but I was glad you reminded me of that. That's just one of those pieces that makes this place so special. And, you know, when we have those things working together, as you said, it's so much easier to bring funds in to help us continue our work in the future. So thanks to the faculty.
We have phenomenal faculty and staff, not just, obviously, what they're doing in the classroom. But we have probably well over 300 or 400 faculty and staff donors that give back through payroll deduction. You know, a lot of people might say, "Well, I give, you know, my blood, sweat, and tears to this place." But they're, they are, that's the first thing. When is the faculty and staff campaign? When is it? When can I, you know, make my gift? And they're making additional gifts during SBC Day just to make sure that they are counted. So our faculty and staff really care, and that just makes telling our story that much easier. So thank you, trustees, et cetera. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. We have a motion to take up the entire consent.
So questions, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the ISPS budget. I think it's in the report from the, is that not correct? Is it really correct? It is in there, right?
I don't know.
Did you see the informational report?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so then. No questions. I'll move to that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second, but I have a question about one item.
Sure.
Not to pull off the agenda. I was just curious about the Air Force Education Service Agreement. Is that targeted at reservists or Air Force members, or is it simply to provide dental services to Air Force members? And so the Air Force recognizes that the more people who become dental hygienists can serve Air Force members? It was just an odd connection.
We have an ongoing relationship with Midville Air Force Base. We actually use it as a clinical site for our dental hygiene program. And so that's been kind of our on-wolf serving relationship with the Air Force. But we use it as an opportunity to engage the Air Force in other ways as well.
Thank you.
I also, Mr. Chair, I know that the equity report is in there, and I want to share two things that we need to work on that's in the equity report. One is we need to do a better job of recruiting minority students to the college. We did not meet that goal. We still have some work there. The second is we need to also hire more minority employees. And so those are two areas that I would be wrong if I did not point out, to make sure you knew that. Both fall in line with our strategic plan. And so hopefully, when we give the report next year, you'll see that we're on par and we've made those improvements. I don't know if Daryl's here. But Daryl and Davana are working together on that. They have, he's behind you, okay. They have found different places to recruit, including our local minority communities that we had not been recruiting in, and building better processes for us to get people to the table, so.
Hi, President, if you would, if you could, one second on that. I mean, in terms of recruiting students, students have so many alternatives and so many places to go now. We need to stay competitive. I had the opportunity of talking to our former recruiting director, Ray Reed, the other day, and he was a speaker down at P Tech for their signing day. So students that are coming from high school now have signing games on when they're going to go to school. I mean, and making it almost like a sports event. So we need to get a little more, we've got to get a little more innovative in all the things that we do and stay ahead of what other folks are doing as well. So I agree with you on that. In terms of hiring more people, I will tell you, we have a heavy, heavy, heavy lift to go. I mean, there are people that I know for a fact that are minimally qualified to get interviews that don't get interviews. And we don't know whether those people are going to do well in interviews or not do well, but we don't, we don't push that process. And let me just share this with you. One of the luxuries that I had as being a senior executive at the company that I was with for 20 years was if I brought the name in, they were getting an interview. I was from the CEO. If Debra brings the name in, doesn't matter, give them an interview. We may be pleasantly surprised. We just don't know. So I think we need to start looking at different strategies and different ways of getting minorities to the table. They may not be a fit for this job, but you may find out there that they're a fit for another job. But we don't engage these people. We just say, "Oh, well, no, that person is not, you know, we're not going to do that." And I, and I would tell you that any board member brings a minority's name forward for, you know, they think that they're a good person. They've worked with them before. They have good skill set. They got a good toolbox. They should be getting interviewed so that we can see if they're a good fit. It's not always the person that has the most initiative. That's why at Ainsight, we never used a degree as the, as the decision-maker. It was whether or not you had the ability to make things happen, right? And get the job complete. Those are the things that matter now. People are not, everybody's not going to look good on paper, but you don't know what those are going to be. I mean, you know, the leader of Microsoft dropped out of college. He doesn't need to be interviewed now, right? But what if somebody could have gotten to him and given him, he kind of, you know, he says, "I hire intellectual knowledge. I don't hire people." And that's what we need to be starting to look at. It's like, what kind of intellectual knowledge can we get? Who's the best intellectuals out here? Or who's the best at their particular area? Is the best well-known? People need to be hired as instructors. And it's the best person to do A V and I T. Let's figure out who they are. So I would tell you, we do need to do a much better job. That is one of the biggest complaints that I get that people apply. They know they meet the minimum guidelines. They don't get interviewed. And that's one of the things that I thought this equity piece was going to do.
Right, we're working on that. And the reason I brought it forward...
And I'm not coming down on you. I'm just telling you that that is something... I'm just telling you that that is something that we need to do. And we, as a board, need to do a better job of getting names to you as well, so.
Thank you. But I wanted to make sure we get sleep on that report. And thank you so much, trustee Gibbons, and to let you know the two areas that we need to improve in, so that you know, when we make decisions and we do things, you won't know, you'll know that there's a reason behind it, but it's already in our strategic plan. And so we're moving forward with that. And again, when we come back next year, I'm hoping that those two are off my list.
I appreciate you bringing them forward.
You know, but I wanted to make sure you knew.
I appreciate you bringing them forward, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. We're going to get all in favor.
I have it.
Opposed, motion passes. Informational reports, trustee Gibbons, I know you want to...
I just have one, a quick one that I promise you won't get on. I had the opportunity of working with ISPS over the past year. I know I haven't been as active as most would like, but I have been involved, and I've had the opportunity of working with Dan and some other folks and Sam on a lot of things. But two things I would respectfully disagree with our board members on is that we have been asked as a group to make a statewide impact and move from being a local group to a statewide group in terms of policymaking and policy embed, and being a group that is a leader in the policy discussion statewide. And two things that I would tell you that we probably will be hearing again, because I'm going to ask that ISPS bring it back to us as a board, is, one is we need to expand the travel budget, because to do that, we need to engage, right now, you know, we just went over, talked about the speaker not being from North Carolina, it's going to be from Jacksonville. These folks are going to have to engage legislators all over the state to be relevant in terms of policy discussion. So I see the budget needs to be expanded there. And then the second thing is, maybe down the road, as we create more buzz, and I've given a lot of time to them yesterday and some other times about how we expand that pace in terms of competing with other groups, I won't say their names, but other groups throughout the state that are read by, daily by legislators and other folks and policy and thought leaders across the state, how we can do that. But I also think that it needs to be an event, just like the foundation has an event, and they bring in speakers, we're going to have to do that. And so I would see a budget of some sort. And Kim Burkin, I disagree on this, which is one of the few times that he and I disagreed, but I do disagree with him that we need a budget to bring thoughtful, thought-provoking and leadership-type individuals in the space of policy and strategic policy, so that we can draw people to the institute, make sure they know who we are statewide, and gain some momentum. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that we'll be bringing that back here on a later date. But those two things are not invisible. We haven't expanded them yet, because we want to come back with a very solid plan, I think. Dan, Sam, and Dr. Kim Jackson have been exceptional in working with me and other board members on, but we're going to try to move that forward and bring that back to us on a later date.
Any other discussion on the informational reports? There are no proposed changes to the board of trustee rules manual, and we are to the president.
Well, thank you so much. Jackie, I might need your help on this. We just heard about the legislative pieces and what's happening. So this year, I will be serving as the chair of the council of presidents, and so I'll have a chance to continue to work with the speaker and the senate president in that role, but I'll also have an opportunity to bring SBC forward. We're getting ready to bring on, I think it's like five new legislators locally, and we're going to have to do a lot of work as a college to get to know those individuals and get things moving. And I believe trustee Gibbons, is it November is the vote?
Yeah, November.
So November, okay, November is the vote, meaning that we will have a very short period of time to get things moving for the first meeting in December with the legislature. So we're going to have to start working on that right now. So I don't have anything new legislatively, you just heard that a few minutes ago. Last week, we had a meeting. It was me and Bill Gady with Bank of America. We had about 20 different business leaders on the line, which was unique, because what Bill thought, when we look at the $1 million we got from Bank of America to place 500 minority students in high-wage-paying jobs over the next couple of years, we needed to expand it beyond Bank of America. And Bill came up with an idea to include all of the other companies. So you had Jagle Circuit, Raymond James, et cetera, et cetera, on the line, to let them know that this also works with them as well. And so these are companies that Valencia has been working on building partnerships with. The meeting went, I thought, extremely, extremely well, that they're ready to work with SBC. And so I wanted the board to know that, as you go around the community and you speak to other people at these companies, that you know that we are already engaged with them. They already, many have responded back saying, I'm in. And so we've been trying to get that hook, and I think that we have that in moving forward. So I just want to publicly thank Bill Gady, because he and I talked through that, to make that happen. I think the other piece is, for the board, we are going to be at Tropicana Field this Friday. Is that this Friday at the Trop for the baseball game?
Yes.
And so if you want to join us, that would be great. They've been very gracious. They're playing Boston, and they've given SBC their own, our own suite, so.
Jackie Robinson night.
Jackie Robinson night. So hope you join us in that this Friday. And the other thing I want to say briefly is about enrollment. We're all talking about how enrollment at state colleges have declined, and that is very true, sort of. What has happened is, we have been focusing a lot on workforce short-term record credentialing programs. Those are not included when we talk enrollment. Enrollment in budget is based on FTE, it's based on credit. And so what's happened, the enrollment has shifted from credit to non-credit, which is what I think the governor's vision has been in making sure that people have short-term record credentials. The college has done that, all of the state colleges have done that. Now the enrollment has shifted. And I think if they take that non-credit and put it over in credit, you'll see the enrollment is equal or at least up. And so we're going to be digging, Dr. Lee, our trough and I, into our programs and those offerings, and making sure that, one, we're offering the right programs, the right modality, the right time, and that they need to high-wage-paying jobs. We do have a few programs that are highly sought after that do not. And so we're going to be working on that. And I wanted to say that publicly, so everybody knows that this is where we're going. But it's also a requirement of the state, it's also a part of House Bill 1507 and some other bills that we're going to be rated on. You heard that we are in the group that's going to have to change our accreditation. To do this, we're going to have to start working on this at least next year, so that we have a new accrediting body in place, so that we overlap the current SACS accreditation and have the other. Because if you're not accredited, you lose financial aid. And so we have to overlap a little bit. The thing that I don't know is, now that we know we're in that group that has to change, do we need to bring SACS back out to review how well we did when we're going to a new accrediting body? So we're going to have some work to do there.
I would take every step of precaution. And make sure that we're covered, because, you know, the legislature could change this, number one, and number two, you know, after five years, you can go back and it happens.
After 10 years, here's the deal. The whole bill goes away in 10 years, and we're just right in the middle of it. If we were, if we were just like four or five years to...
I think it should be said, though, that's, it's not of the community colleges making this.
I know.
It was the SACS folks, you know, not playing nicely. And all they had to do was talk to the speaker, and I think we could have resolved this, but they didn't want to, so.
Well, we're going to have to do it, and so I'm just letting everyone know that we fall in that group. There's only a handful of colleges that will have to make the move. We just happen to fall in the timeline of having to change accrediting bodies. And then this week, SBC will be hosting the council of presidents and the AFC meeting at EpiCenter. We will be spending four hours with the chancellor to start working on the new funding model for that $30 million that you heard Chris talk about. And the good news is, we get to co-create the model. So we're looking at different ways it's going to, we have to have this ready to rock and roll in September. So we'll be spending a lot of time working on a new funding model. So we'll be on campus with the chancellor this week. And that will be my report.
Thank you very much. Next meeting date is May 17th at the EpiCenter.
Before you cancel on that, the EpiCenter, we're going to have a short board meeting to approve some urgent things, like contracts have to be done by the state, a state rule about May. So we'll be bringing the A and P contracts forward for approval. Then we will, and any other urgent thing that the board needs to approve, we'll close that meeting, and then we'll go into the meeting to look at the budget proposal for '22, '23 year, as well as working with our consulting group on the facilities model and what we can do with their recommendations. So we'll need the board's feedback on those findings. That would be it, Mr. Chair.
Are we good? This meeting is adjourned.